We're reconvening as the Wycomico County Council for July 16, 2019. The current item we have on the work session agenda is in front of me here. Is the reviewing of zoning and the use for the storage tank of Porter Mill Road. We appreciate everybody being here today very much. Please make sure that you do have a microphone in front of you when you speak, and I'm sorry, but you will have to share. We would start out, if you could, introduce yourselves and your position for the public. Thank you. Start with Keith. Let me start with you.
Good afternoon. Keith Hall, Deputy Director, Wycomico County Planning and Zoning.
Lori Carter, Director, Wycomico County Planning and Zoning.
Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Rick Dwyer, Co-Administrator with Planning and Zoning.
Clark Meadows, County Zoning Administrator.
Thank you very much. Director Carter or Weston?
Yeah, I'll start then. Yeah, as President Cannon had mentioned earlier in the meeting, we've received several letters from council regarding the Porter Mill Road and the sludge tank issue, and there was a request to bring planning and zoning staff forward to help council determine if a zoning code amendment is necessary. I'll turn things over to them. I just wanted to add that, as also mentioned by President Cannon, we have a process in place that involves the Agricultural Reconciliation Committee. It isn't often used, but we feel that in this case, this is the process to go forward when you have an agricultural operation that has a dispute with residents. So with that...
They have no power, so, right?
They do have power. It was if the Chapter 186 right to farm that was included in the original packet, there was a reason for that. If you go specifically to, let's see, 186-6B, Resolution of Disputes Regarding Agricultural Operations, and the orders, if you go down to Section 5, Orders of the Agricultural Reconciliation Committee Shall Be Binding on the Parties as a Matter of Law. If, again, if you wish to appeal their decision, you can go to the Circuit Court. So they do have some authority. That's why it was included in their original packet, even though... So with that, I would like to turn it over to the Director and her staff to go into the weeds on this issue.
Good day, gentlemen. We are here today basically to hear from you in regards to how you would wish for our department to actually proceed. Our particular staff has went out and did everything that was to code as far as this particular project. As you do, or as you have looked at it pretty much over time, we're just wanting to see exactly what's the thoughts of the council. We're looking for some direction and how you, you know, would want us to actually proceed. I have, pretty much all of the staff that is here was readily involved with this particular project. So if there was particular questions related to that particular process, we're here to talk about that. We're here to pretty much, you know, pretty much explain exactly how this came about.
Well, since you brought that up, maybe to start from the beginning will probably help some. I mean, I'm happy to give some direction, but before we get there, maybe, you know, ask a question regarding, you know, you mentioned the process, and this was the code and so forth. I guess one question that's come up, and you've heard it from the public comments, was that, you know, this was also proposed at Dorchester, you know, we got pretty, both had pretty similar ag codes in terms of our permitted uses, et cetera. And I guess the big difference there was, you know, they made the determination that it was an industrial scale use, and then as a result, sent it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think ultimately got withdrawn, like I think is my understanding. But just the fact, you know, there was a different, you know, I know it was different counties, et cetera, so I understand that, but probably that issue that's come up several times, you know, in the comments and so forth, and in our discussions, is, well, they determined to be, quote, "industrial" in scale, but we didn't. So I guess that's probably a good, you know, a good starting point.
A good starting point, I understand. I'm going to, at this point, turn this over to Mr. Clark, who basically spoke with the particular county, but he can also talk from the level of zoning.
The initial action regarding the use of the tank for storage of this material is consistent with our county zoning code's definition of what is agricultural. That, by our table of uses in the county zoning code, is identified as the principal use of the property. The tank falls in line with the related buildings, structures, and appurtenances necessary to carry out the aforementioned activities. That comes at the end of the definition in the county zoning code for what is considered agriculture or agricultural.
Yeah, I mean, there, the, so I guess one question comes to mind, but what if it was a, hypothetical, but what if it's a 10 million gallon tank, would that still be considered a related building structure, you know, to carry out activities?
There is no specific size limitation, or ceiling, or cap specified by code.
Right. Clark?
Joe?
Hit that mic. We've been hearing that, you know, this should be considered industrial because there's industrial waste going into it, or so it's been said. How do we, I'll go back a few years. Somebody came to me one time, wanted to build a garage to do mechanical work, and they, it was right after the zoning had been changed, and they couldn't do it with a special exception, but they were in the ag district, and they were told, well, if you work on tractors, it'd be an ag issue, so you could do this, but if you're going to work on cars, no. So if this is not 100% ag product going into these tanks, how can it, how do you, how can it be done as an agricultural?
Mr. Hall, we haven't seen a list of what is in the product. We don't regulate the fluids that are going into any storage tank, be it grain, feed, wastewater.
But shouldn't it, shouldn't it, if there's a question about it, I mean, not much of a question if there's a green tank and they're putting corn or soybeans in it, okay? We know that's, we know that's ag, but this, there is actually a question about what product is going into that tank, coming from the citizens. How can we guarantee that it's only ag products going into that tank?
My knowledge is that it's an approved soil amendment by the Maryland Department of Agriculture.
So there's no way...
I've been told MDA will test it once a year, which is an improvement. I was told before that it was once every five years, they would test that material. I mean, we don't, we don't know that it's corn going into the silos. We don't know that it's, you know, it gets into that level.
You're getting into the weeds, no pun intended, on this, but I think it's pretty obvious from what we've heard about this company and read about them, that they use more product than just poultry products, and that's, you know, they're getting sludge or oil or something from restaurants and things like that. I think that's a big part of it. I think from what the folks are thinking, if it was just ag going into it, it wouldn't be as much.
Well, actually, Dorchester, when they determined, I remember when I was reading their determination, when they determined it to be industrial scale, it wasn't actually because of what was going in it. They actually determined that because they determined it to be, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember right, they determined it to be fertilizer and 3 million gallons of fertilizer. They determined storing that is not a, you know, it's an agriculture, it's a fertilizer storage facility, and by that kind of scale, they can determine that, well, that's an industrial scope, not agricultural. I just remember reading that from their zoning appeals.
We've also heard that there's a potential lawsuit over that determination as well. So while they've made that ruling, it hasn't been tested in court.
It does bring into play, though, I guess maybe another issue. I mean, fortunately, we know it's not plutonium that's going in there, right? So there is some oversight.
Appreciate it. There is oversight.
Yeah, okay. But I guess what, part of what Councilman McCain was suggesting, as I understand it, when you talk about what the permitting is and what the permitting might not be, is it true that whatever is in that tank, in order for it to be an agricultural use and not an industrial use, must be applied to the soils on that same property? Other words, if this storage tank is using, you know, is just a holding tank to service the entire Eastern Shore Peninsula, are we still at an agricultural use, or are we now industrial? Because that's been brought to our attention a couple of times.
It's not, it's, when looking at the uses and looking at zoning, it is not what's called a farm-related use, meaning that the person, the applicant that's applied for the tank is not getting this product and subsequently selling it. Under our zoning, the applicant can put it on his property, he can put it on a neighboring property, he could give it away to you, or give it away to Joe. I think when you start looking at other uses, scale is kind of a blurred line here, and we see 3 million gallons, and we think that's a big number. However, it is, when you're really looking at it, it is acceptable. Roughly, I think it's 3 million gallons, I think that's enough for 250 acres, to put it in a scale. The stuff is being applied over various parts of the county, approximately 5,000 acres of it are being applied. One of the things that the staff looks at as part of the building permit review process is, does it meet all the prerequisites? By the prerequisites, I'm just taking us back a little bit to give us context here. By the prerequisites, does it meet the building code? Is it in the critical area? Does it meet the architectural and engineering standards for the tank, to make sure there isn't a rupture, to make sure that normal operations, that it will be safe? Zoning is another consideration. As Mr. Meadows was saying, when looking at the zoning, we look to see, is it or is it not a permitted use? Under the current code, the way it's written, there is not a size constraint, there is not a size limitation. Part of that is because that gets into a slippery slope. Industries' operations are always changing, and as such, we try not to put qualifiers or quantities on them. Also, when you're looking at this, excuse me, we've been fortunate enough to work with a lot of citizens that have called and had concerns, and concerns like Councilmember McCain has expressed, Councilman Holloway, Dorchester did have a process. The applicant did go through the process, and it was determined by their staff that they would need a special exception for the storage of this material. Ultimately, the applicant withdrew his application. I think it's important for us to understand, when looking and comparing Dorchester County zoning and Wycomico's, Wycomico's is not more permissive. The applicant came in and said he was going to store a product, an ag product. Because it is just storing, it does not require a special exception. If it was storing and sales, that gets into the nuances of a farm-related business, which would have had a special exception associated with it, which would have went to the Board of Appeals. Why their staff determined that it was storage and sales, I can't opine on that. However, I do feel it's important enough from a zoning context to know that regulatory-wise, we're playing on the same field here.
So you're saying, if he's paying other farmers to spread it on their field, we've got a different ballgame?
If he's getting paid for the product, if he's getting financial gain, that's the tipping point of it coming out of agricultural to a commercial venture.
Well, I think we better look at it, because I do believe he's getting paid.
I think one of the things that's difficult in any of this, when you get into the construct of the private sector and private business, when you come through for the building permit, there are certain qualifiers or questions that are within our purview. There's other questions that are way outside of our purview, so the one question here being, are you using this on your own property? Are you selling, are you selling it? And the answer to the sales is, no, this is for my use. Keith?
Please, Councilman Holloway.
So what is the difference between him getting paid from a farmer to apply it to their property? So you're saying that would kick it into a different...
That kicks it into what's termed a farm-related business, which would require a special exception.
So how does that not relate to, or does it relate to, the fact that he's, he is getting paid to take the product?
That's a very good question. It's on the back end of that transaction, it's not on the front end. That was something I had to get a little clarification on myself.
So what's the difference?
The front end is, the front end, he's getting paid, the applicant, to the best of my understandings, without trying not to get into too much of private sector business outside of the authority, way outside of the authority of a zoning code, but trying to understand operations. The applicant is being paid to transport this from the facility to the farms in Wycomico that he's using it on. Subsequently, no one is, to the best of my understanding, based on applicant's own words, he is not getting paid to go spread it on your farm or on Mr. Dodd's farm. That being the big difference.
What if he's paying that farmer to spread it on their field?
I don't see how that, again, we're kind of getting into a little bit of legalese, I don't see how that would be a financial gain to the applicant himself, because he would be paying someone else.
You mean spreading it on a field?
Again, just trying to get through the nuances of the business.
It shouldn't be a financial gain, because if he doesn't get rid of that product, he can't get paid to take more.
You know, I think it's, I think it's just going back to the interpretation of how we're looking at the code in a non-arbitrary way. We say that's not within your purview, say it's not within your purview, right? Who is, who isn't responsible for oversight of that type of distribution? So that we know he stays... I know there's, I know there's an association with a nutrient management plan, the Maryland Department of Agriculture, however, I'm not certain of their wide authority, and that's one thing through this entire discussion, and I appreciate the citizens' patience. I've gotten to talk to a lot of them, is understanding mainly the different authorities, whose role is what in all of this. So when you talk about the DAF, or the dissolved air flotation, the soil amendment, you're looking at that from a nutrient management plan perspective. When you're looking at the public health and safety of it, that's going to fall under the Maryland Department of Agriculture. Anytime you're applying fertilizer and the like to a piece of property, you have to have it approved, planned by the Maryland Department of Agriculture. When you're talking zoning, and is this a permitted use, that starts getting into the authority of Wycomico County. When you're talking about potential concerns of, to the water bodies or the environment, that starts getting into the Maryland Department of Environment. So you can see there's a lot of complexity and a lot of moving pieces to this one operation.
Mr. Cannon asked a couple things, and you touched on, I've got three questions. Touched on one thing, and I really didn't get an answer, and I thought I read, read it in here about them being allowed to spread it on their property. I thought there was legislation saying that they can spread it on their property, their property only, and I know some of the citizens out there had made the same statement, and I can guarantee you, they've done their homework and found some of that information to be fact.
They've helped us.
So that one question, who allows them to spread it, and where are they allowed to spread it? With the same question, who else is spreading this, other than this same farmer? Is anybody else spreading it?
To the best of my abilities, I know there is one other tank in the north, northwest part of the county, a 1 million gallon storage tank. However, I do not know who Valley Protein, which is a distributor, who all of their vendors are in Wycomico County. I know it's been stated that approximately 5,000 acres are being treated.
That's a lot.
There's 185,000 acres in A1 zoning district, there's 100,000 acres of farm-related county. Yes, for context.
So did the county permit that one?
So that would have had to gone through planning and zoning.
So who regulates where it can be spread, and who follows up on that to make sure it's being done legally?
A lot of that's the Maryland Department of Agriculture, because it's tied to that nutrient management plan.
Nutrient management plans.
However, you did get into one nuance that I want to bring up, because you said the word "necessary," and I think that was in some of the responses going back and forth between the council, as well as the department, trying to figure all this out. When you, you know, again, not to get too clinical, when you look at the definitions, and this is the construct we're under, gentlemen, is the definitions, so it's not arbitrary of 225 or the zoning code, it has the definition of agriculture, and it even states, supporting structures and buildings and so forth. Therefore, it's not an accessory use. If it were an accessory use, as defined by 225, that's under my hand, because you know I always have to bring documentation, then yes, that would be limited to the property that it was on, and adjoining properties under the same ownership. This is an ag structure. I know it's very similar. I know you could say that's semantics. That's the, that's the interpretation now that the department has used when reviewing this application.
So with this particular 3 million gallon tank, you said they got a permit for storage. Was there any discussion about what they were going to do with it?
I defer to Mr. Dwyer as the intake, but again, when we're looking at it, we're looking at it solely from the structure. However, if they were going to put a hazardous chemical in there, of course, there's other regulatory bodies that we would be working with. Everything that zoning is about is protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare.
So this farmer told you what they were storing?
Mr. Dwyer did.
And you didn't ask what they were going to do with it?
Well, no, it's a permitted agricultural product at the time, and we reviewed it under the building code as a agricultural structure or an agricultural tank. So when we get, we run it through the building code and the plan review criteria, which beats all those bullet points on, on the attachment, we're looking at the structural integrity of the tank, we're looking at the structural integrity of the property, those type of things. The actual product that's in the tank is, as has been stated, is regulated by a different authority, which is the Maryland Department of Agriculture.
And that brings us why we're here now.
Right.
I just would say, of course, there's been a bigger issue the last five years with nutrient management specialists not being funded at the state level, so you might have a lot of nutrient management plans, but you don't have individuals coming out to actually write those plans, or to go check what's actually happening on that. From what I'm hearing, Keith, is this correct, you say, so the front end versus the back end is the question? We don't, we don't have...
When you're looking at financial gain.
Okay, and we don't have regulations on the front end, so am I getting that right?
Correct. Again, interpretation of the code today, the financial gain is, is in this application, would the applicant be taking the soil amendment and having financial gain by selling it and the like?
And when was the last time we reviewed what's a permitted ag product? Is that, does that go, happens every time we have a comp plan, or is that...
I don't really, I'm going to answer your question a little bit differently. We don't get into the review a lot, well, we have no authority to get into the review of the actual fertilizers, the soil amendments that may be used, things of that nature. So that's where we're relying on coordination with our state agencies. One of the things that was briefly touched today, and I know these are difficult conversations as we go through this, the soil amendment, supposedly, what's the difference between a soil amendment and a fertilizer? Is that a soil amendment does not have truly measurable nitrogen or phosphorus. So as you can imagine, as the state is trying to meet its nutrient, nutrient quality targets associated with the WIP that you've heard about, or the MS Phase 2, MS 4, this product is preferred to some degree over the traditional fertilizer of chicken manure and the like because of that. However, it does seem that quantity might be a question. Through my discussions with the citizens on Porter Mill, you know, one of the things, and even as I heard in some of the interview last night, you try to synthesize down what's, what's the issue here? And really, there's two issues that are being talked about in different capacities, one being the tank, and the other one being the soil amendment. The tank is clearly within the authority of the zoning code, which is ultimately under the legislative authority of the county council. When we start talking specifically about a soil amendment or fertilizer, that is outside of the authority of the county council or any part of the applicable code. I've come to the conclusion that I think it really comes down to the perception of the nuisance of looking or smelling this product, and I'm not saying it smells or it doesn't smell, as well as the flies, I'm not saying it's causing flies or it's not causing flies. So one of the things to try to provide this council construct is, when looking at this, we can definitely assist with trying to look at zoning and what zoning might look like. One of the things that do caution us about, trying to zone on a sense, on a sense of temperature, on a sense of smell, on a sense of sight, is very challenging, a very slippery slope.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's suggesting that, you know, well, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I know the question right up front from Lori was, you know, well, what, looking for direction, quote, from us, and I'll just make this comment, because I know we're not going to talk too much about this today, but I've said this since the day I started running for office. You know, our ag code is archaic, it's been around for a long time, it's, we really haven't made any, you know, it's a 20-some-year-old code, and just like, you know, Clark, you know, you mentioned that reading, you know, it's very, it just lacks any specificity, it's very generalistic, as most codes are, but the big thing that I always address is, almost every county in the state of Maryland, their ag districts have different levels of ag, you know, whether it's A1, A2, A3, and what those mean, and we do that with every other classification. You know, residential zoning, we got R15, R20, R30, commercial, we got C1, C2, C3, office service highway, industrial, we got light industrial, heavy industrial, so forth and so on, and then we get to ag, we got ag. And ag makes up most of our county. And ag zoning is, obviously, ag's very different in, you know, one mile outside the city of limits, on Nanticoke Road, in the middle of 20-some subdivisions we have, and there happens to be an ag field in between there, that's very different than, you know, the ag field, it might be in the very most eastern part of the county, and Willards, you know, these are very different locations, and, but we got the same classification. So, I mean, that's one thing that I've always suggested, and the thing is, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, everybody else already does it. You know, every county, pretty much across the shore, has different classifications in their ag district. And, you know, we're having lots of examples that are popping up, storage tanks now being one of these, and, you know, where that, you know, something can be implemented into our new ag zoning code, you know, how far they should be from dwellings, things of that nature, you know, it's not a smell or sight thing, it's just, that's pretty standard zoning stuff. You know, another thing that's going to pop up is industrial-scale solar. In fact, we just got an email, and Ms. Hurley supplied us with a, she was at a meeting with Mako, and I've been talking about industrial-scale solar, something we're going to need to address. Most counties have already done that. I know Queen Anne's County, they have a corridor, a certain corridor, you have to be in that corridor, but I know Ms. Hurley stated, you know, her last Mako meeting she was at last week, one of the things they suggested to counties was, you need to address industrial-scale one of the things they suggested to counties was you need to address industrial scale solar. So, we need to get out in front of some of these things. So, that's my, you know, the end game of all this is, you know, I think we need to start working on. And this, and this is a win-win for everyone in a county. This isn't about winners and losers in our, like, ag district. No, it's a win-win. You know, we want to make sure we're protecting our best farmland, that those farmers are able to, you know, to farm that promotes productive soil. We have other tracts of land in our county have very poor soils. You know, what kind of uses are permitted on those versus the ones with the different soils? We have other ag areas that are located over top of our main sources of water, our paleo channel or our Monocanographer, you know, what kind of zoning do they have compared to other parts? You know, so those are just pretty basic things. But I mean, like I say, it's a win-win for everybody. You know, consistency of use is the main variable for property values. That's why, that's why in the residential area, you can't build, you know, light industrial uses. You know, but our ag district, when you read the permitted uses, well, it's, it, a better question is what's not permitted? You know, it's pretty much anything goes for the most part. So, I know that's a lot said, but it's, but in general, it's addressing our, our very outdated ag district zoning code.
Yeah, um, there's no doubt that the applicant here knows there's issues with this and people upset. Has, has anybody reached out to him in your office or you guys and said, look, people are upset. Haven't you got a better place for this than where it's going? Has anybody tried to talk him into doing that?
I, I mean, I don't think we've addressed it in that, that light. I mean, essentially, he's made application.
Right.
You know, and we, we looked at the information that was submitted staff.
Something we all do. I mean, we.
I mean, it's still, we can't make him?
No, it's a, it's a good point. When we had the, the CAFO issues last time, we had DPI as sort of that good neighbor pushing a good neighbor policy. And even before the law went in place, we had voluntary efforts made by some of these farms. Did they change their location? No, but they put additional measures in, you know, spill containment. Like, they could put a berm or concrete pad that could hold three million gallons or, or something should it, should it spill, spill. I, I think the, the takeaway is that the planning and zoning department has followed the current code.
I realize that, Wes, and that's what I'm getting at. I, I understand we've followed the law, followed the rules. But has anybody used enough common sense to go out there and say, hey, Mr. Burns? You know, the people are upset about this. You've got a bunch of mad neighbors. You might end up with people following suit.
Sure.
But let's look for another place to put this. Has anybody done that?
Mr. Hall, no, no one to date through the department has done that. However, I think you're touching on a very good point. Also, I think it came up in the public comments as well. Typically, when one neighbor has a problem with another neighbor, we look for them to resolve it through whatever good neighbor policy they can instead of creating regulation.
Well, I just.
So, I think getting Delmarva poultry industry involved and using their expertise and helping us as well, looking at other alternatives as Councilmember McCain.
No, no, no.
Yourself has suggested. As well as reaching out to the applicant.
Well, I think that's, I think that's a, I think that's a measure that needs to be done through the ag reconciliation group, which is what they are doing. Either that or, either that or maybe through elected officials. I don't think that's a staff responsibility.
Yeah, I would kind of not look at that, at that being our responsibility. I think we would have to be very careful with that. And so, again, we're dealing with private sector, a business as well. But I do say this, as far as the staff, we did take it upon ourselves to go out to look at the properties. We've looked at, you know, we've been out several times, you know, to pretty much see exactly what the citizens are talking about. So, it's not like we've just sat back and we basically have been, you know. I know that, Mr. Hallway. I just wanted, you know, to say that we have went out, we've smelled, we've looked at what everything that everyone's talked about, we've acknowledged that. But I think it would be not wise for the staff to make that approach.
Also, there is a level of sensitivity here. As you've seen in the letter dated July 15th from the executive, due process now has been initiated. Specifically, due process has been initiated about the use of the soil amendment. Therefore, you know, when we get into discussions about that, it's very limited because we don't want to undermine the process or do anything that's not beneficial to either party or the ag reconciliation committee. Due process has not been initiated yet on the building permit. However, that's something that still the county could be subject to. So, I'd say anything we do will continue to work with legal to make sure that we're well within our authorities and there's no ramifications or liability coming to the county.
Let me ask you too. I, I recognize very clearly what you touched on, Keith, and so did you, Wes, and the fact that you can't have this, this confusion, what they call conflation, where people are associating one issue with another. The odor is a totally separate issue than it is from this actually in itself. I mean, we ran into that with the poultry where people were always complaining about poultry houses. And a lot of them were talking about the, the spreading of manure. Related, but not 100%.
Yes.
So, my question would be on the permitting process. Do you also take into consideration when you do this, what might come into play with unloading and offloading the product? Also coming into consideration is the transportation hazards? Like, the gentleman that was here at one time said, you know, these, these trucks that are coming in and out. What happens if one of them turns over on, on this road that could possibly, you know, be in a very, you know, populated area? When you issue those permits, is this part of the restrictions that, that go with it?
The building permit process is specifically, chapter 117 is addressing the development of the site, the property itself. But as, as was mentioned earlier, we send out a, an umbrella to a lot of different agencies, departments of the county, the state. There's a lot of different hands that take a look at every project that comes through. And then prior to us issuing a permit in the county, we, we wait for the sign off or the, the okay or the approval from those various agencies. Some are other county departments, some are state agencies like Soil Conservation, those folks. So, there's quite a, again, the word umbrella that goes out to ask folks for input, comments. But generally, we're looking at the development of the site, the impact. So, the infrastructure are, are taken into account, you know, as far as the, the umbrella that's put out there. Calvert's put into, you know, county ditches for access onto the property. We're looking, on the building code side, we're looking at the site analysis part, the turning radius of the tractor trailers in this case, or, or the farm equipment or what have you. But again, we, we kind of look to the experts in their particular field or their particular department to tell us the condition of that permit.
Would it, would it compromise that permit if you knew that in order for this tank to exist and to function on a regular basis, that you'd have, hypothetically, that you'd have to have 16 tractor trailers delivering this product, driving right down the front of an elementary school and putting it into this tank and then coming back? I say hypothetically because that's an extreme.
Sure.
But I use that because I think we do need to know whether or not these trucks that may be coming in and out are actually creating a greater hazard than the three million tank itself.
So, historically, going to the CAFO examples, they were put in some locations where the tractor trailers to either bring the feed or, or pick up chickens were on county roads that were not used to that level of traffic. We have not required them to then upgrade miles and miles of roads to put in their, their, you know, chicken houses. That is something we, we could consider, but that, I think that would greatly limit most, most practices there. What, what the roads division does is they then monitor, I mean, every year they analyze all the roads and they do it as they drive. And we've seen if driveways are too narrow, the turning radius for trucks will then start damaging the shoulders of the roads. So, so they'll then say, hey, look, you need to, and I've been involved in those conversations, your driveway needs to be twice as wide to handle the trucks you have coming in because you're damaging our road. We also pay for them, or, or we make them pay for that specific repair. When you get at intersections that are not used to big trucks, that's, it gets a lot harder to pinpoint, okay, it is you that is, that has caused that damage. That, that is something we can consider. I know Councilman McCain has thrown out a lot of ideas as well. Again, what I was trying to say earlier is based on our current code, everything the applicant did was, was okay. It sounds like there are changes that council wishes to make and we will gladly, you know, give, give our staff's opinion on what those changes may or may not do. Keith is trying to hesitate, all right, if we go after structures, we got grain bins and, and swimming pools to worry about as well. And, you know, and then there's MDA. Maybe we need to reach out to the state and say, all right, you know what? If they just ban this application, we have 5,000 acres that are no longer using it. What does the farming community think of that? So, so there's, it's a lot of, it's really tricky and it's not all, as they're trying to explain, in our wheelhouse. But we're, we're open to whatever council wants to propose to change and we'll, we'll look at, you know, what we think the ramifications would be.
I think what council wants to change is a lot of what we've talked about today, but also what the public has been talking about at our public hearings. You know, we're, we're hoping that common sense prevails and you can recognize what the concerns might be and, and know how to adjust. Again, I, I, I don't bring up the issue of the transportation because I'm telling you, I want you to limit transportation. I need you to see whether or not that needs to be taken into consideration. If, if by having this particular tank in place where it is, if we're, we're inviting other hazardous circumstances to develop and if we've thought that through. So, anyway, that's, that's what my, my point is. You had touched on earlier, Keith, about the fact that it wasn't your purview as far as the, the spreading of the, the sludge. This is another area, I recognize this, it's a completely separate section. This is the, what happens with the sludge unless it comes into play with what the permit allows, as in selling it to other locations.
Correct.
I understand the MDA oversees this, but when you talk about nutrient management and when you're talking about phosphorus management tools, I'm concerned that they are only looking very, was it myopic? Is that what that's called?
Yes.
Yeah, very, very narrow view. Whereas they are looking at what that farmer is putting on that property. I'm not so convinced that MDA is tracking where that sludge comes from and adding a point saying, okay, we have a hundred, you know, we have a million ounces here, we have half a million.
They may.
I don't know if they, we have that assurance. So, I'm not quite so sure that solves that problem.
I think Keith touched on it, but, but, you know, if, if you're not involved in the TMDL and the bay cleanup effort, they're focusing on nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment. You can apply things to fields that are not nitrogen and phosphorus. And that's sort of what this product is. Now, if it had, say, you know, restaurant grease, I don't think that helps any plants or, or anything for that matter. But, you know, I know there's, I want to say it's ground up oyster shells or something that can be applied to fields. I'm not a farmer, but, yeah. So, so you can, you can, and the reason why soil amendment, and Keith touched on this. So, from a nutrient management plan, going to what you're saying, they are looking at what is the nitrogen being applied? What is the phosphorus being applied and what are the amounts? When you're applying something like oyster shell, I don't think they have to report that necessarily. So, this may be a friendlier product for farmers to put on, that they get benefits and they don't get as much hassle from the state. The state may need to regulate this.
My point was though, in, in trying to track what this, what this tank, where this tank's sludge is going to be dispersed and whether they stay within the guidelines of the permit, we need to know what's happening. And I don't think the answer suggesting MDA would know in their oversight capacity through phosphorus management tools, et cetera. I don't think that.
Yeah, I don't think MDA would know. I think there are questions that the council have that probably would be advantageous to reach out to the Maryland Department of Agriculture and see if you can have a similar discussion with them as you're having with us. Again, I think it's that, that slippery slope of looking at how much government gets into private business. And, and gentlemen, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I, you know, I try to lean on the less regulatory side because I, I don't know where it ends. To, you know, going to what end? I, I think your question or your concern is very valid. A permit has been issued, a permit has been issued based on a good faith statement that the product that's going in the tank has not been sold or not being sold or there's not financial gain. How we try to monitor that, there's not systems in place today. I'm not saying there shouldn't be or there should be systems, just giving you kind, the current lay of the land. There's not provisions of anything, I really understand, that's a commercial or ag activity where county staff is tracking the operations so diligently. I think it goes back, the checks and balances are to make sure that the product that's coming in, we've heard that there's cooking grease or cooking fat potentially in it. We've reached out to the vendor through discussions with them. They do take in grease from restaurants, spent grease, cooking fat. That's a completely separate operation that's going on. It is not being infused into the soil amendment, simply put, because grease and cooking fat will burn up a crop really quick. However, I think the more we can continue to learn about what it is we're talking about, whether it's Dorchester County, whether it's what is this soil amendment? I think it'll help us come to those decisions. Going back to transportation, no use that I'm aware of, aware of via zoning has any type of transportation component considered. What I mean by that is when you go to the planning commission, you want to have a commercial use or an industrial use or a residential use. While the trips generated might be known, there's never been an impact statement about how that's going to impact local county or state roads. So, again, just trying to lay the context of the current environment. Not saying that's the way to move forward, but it's something that can be considered. We gladly have got a lot to work on with Mr. McCain and, and his discussion and opinion and seeing where the council falls on this about looking at opening up the zoning code. The one thing I can recommend is we did update the comprehensive plan in March of 2017. I think anytime, you know, to crack open the zoning code is a very difficult task. We're willing to take it on. We'll be there to guide the county, which is the executive and the council. My recommendation is, you know, before maybe we go in and, and crack the zoning code open for creating a new district, maybe we incrementally look at cracking the zoning code open and implementing the comprehensive plan. And that might be a good start to get everybody acclimated to it. However, I, you know, I think it is upon us now, based on your request, to go out, look at what other counties are doing, especially with the ag district to start with, and we come back and report that to you and we can all kind of come to some type of conclusion.
There's a lot of good ideas out there. You know, I'm, I'm all about.
Absolutely.
Taking other, you know, taking other people's ideas. We don't have to be the one to be creative. Just one thing before we leave this argument, I do just want to mention because it's come up in discussions and no one's had an answer to it. So, I think it's part of this education process. There's, doesn't appear to be anything that we've been, been able to determine that addresses the issue of what's to prevent someone who's storing this product from simply using the fields as a disposal site? You know, they got to dispose this product. So, what keeps them from just simply, you know, does, does anything require them to harvest a crop? For example, and I mention that because like I say, I mentioned earlier, I live across from a field where this products is delivered. And it comes every year about end of June, first of July. They're actually disking the field as I speak now. There's no, nothing in the ground and they tend to plant usually right around the first of August. Like planting in August, I mean, you're not going to get a crop planted in August. And they've never, ever, never been a combine in that field. They've never harvested a crop from that field.
So, what you're seeing is there is nothing to the best of my abilities, speaking from a legal sense, that would prohibit someone from disposing a product that they're allowed to put on their field as long as it was associated with an approved nutrient management plan. If they were applying this on a, a field without an approved nutrient management plan, I think that's a good question for the Maryland Department of Agriculture. What you're seeing as it's being applied in June and July is for a different crop. It's not for soybeans or corn. That's looking for the grass seed that's getting ready to be planted.
Well, they actually plant soybeans every year.
So, they're planting late, but they're safe.
They don't harvest them.
That's, yes, that, that's a different, that's a different sphere.
So, like I'm always going to, you know, I just can't quite figure, I can't figure it out.
But the same would be for chicken manure or any fertilizer. As long as it was part of an approved nutrient management plan tied to a piece of property. If you wanted to just dispose of it within the rights or within the construct of that plan, I don't see how there's any preventive measure at this stage.
Mr. Cannon, could I offer just a comment and a suggestion? Yeah, as you know, I've done a memo on the zoning and let's get back to the zoning aspect of this and particularly this particular tank and the use of it. I think as far as the use is concerned, and zoning regulates use basically. That's the nature of why you have zoning. That if the applicant is getting paid in any manner to apply this product on any other than his own land, that that would be what would be a farm business and would require a special exception. And I think about 15 minutes. And I think about 15 minutes ago, Mr. Hall said more or less the same thing. We were talking about front-end payment, back-end payment. I don't think it makes any difference if he's getting paid at either end to do that and it's not going on his own land, then that would be a farm business, just like if he set up a southern state store and sold fertilizer. Uh, so that, there's, that's one point. The other suggestion is, why not ask the planning commission to look into this? That's how zoning changes begin. That's the genesis of zoning changes, is the planning commission. They can hold hearings, they can get information from the staff and come up with, with recommendations after holding public hearings and getting information. That, to me, would be the logical way to go on this, rather than to have the council suggest something, well, here's what we think. I mean, that's one, one reason why we have a planning commission.
Yeah, yeah, that's not our role to be making those suggestions. Yeah, we're, we're, we're the end product of this, yeah, so, yeah, you bring to us.
Well, I think President somewhat could say that, that has been set. As staffing the planning commission, uh, their expectations are that it would be similar to how the poultry legislation came out, in which you were the front end of this, you were the face of it. You did make the regulate, regulatory recommended changes that subsequently have to go to planning commission because it is chapter 225. So, even though you're the authority to make the legislative changes, the planning commission is still part of that due process and has to hold a public hearing.
And, and in the past, Keith, we have started stuff at the planning commission, not at the council. You can do it either way, but, I mean, essentially, we have a commission and that's part of their, their charge, so why not use it?
Well, just getting back, I think, to similar to what Mr. Taylor said, I would like to see, and you're asking us what we'd like to see, I would like to see some conclusive, um, uh, results as far as how the, the spreading of the sludge is being tracked, if it requires contacting MDA or, or whomever. I don't know the call, but it would be good if you could do that for us, for the, for the county.
Absolutely.
To find out how it might be tracked, not to add additional regulations as you suggested, but just to make sure that this individual is following the law, the letter of the law.
Mr. McCain, I did have a question for you. Um, was there any particular county that you have studied or have commented about that you, um, have liked as it relates to zoning?
Well, I, I know a lot of them have made recent changes, and, and, you know, I mean, Dorchester is one of those, but I know Queen Anne's, uh, I mean, they've made several changes that are pretty recent. Tablets made changes, um, recently, um, so I think those are three that I'm definitely aware of that have made some pretty recent changes, and they have different, and they have different zoning class, you know, different ag zoning classifications in their ag, but they're, you know, they're, you know, the, the, uh, intensity in certain districts are different than in other districts and so forth, even though they're all ag zoning districts.
Yeah, with the level of resource conservation or what areas are priority preservation areas or, you know, no, I'm looking at Dorchester counties right now, um, and I know they're about to get their comp plan update, uh, but that might be a good one. Those counties, I, I've worked on their comp plans.
And that's, and that's what they're coming out of, just as you mentioned Keith, yeah, right, you know, we, you know, we've just updated our comp plan, and that's what's come out of these, is from their updated comp plans. Well, now, they got to make sure that's matching, you know, their zoning codes, you know, because that's the other thing, our, you know, our, our, all our zoning codes are really a working process all the time in reality, you know, even though we send a, we kind of create them and then just keep them, but in reality, you know, you know, things change, you know, so we can adjust either via amendments or, or whatever, but, yeah, I think, I think there's some, you know, good ones we could follow.
Yes, Josh.
Last thing I'll say is that it might be, would be, might be good to, I don't know if MDA would come down and do an informa- information session, but maybe they would host something and to talk about this issue. I, I do definitely agree, we don't know enough as far as what's transporting, how much are we using our roads. There's, there's a whole lot of information that we don't know, um, that would be good to know, and maybe the state would benefit from knowing in order to put in future regulations, but, uh, the, the thing I say is, uh, just a question of a moratorium, is, is something like that helpful? Let's say the applicant here decides to find a great spot in San Domingo, and it's a different community, you know, does that, are we going to go through the process again, or would it be helpful to, to put a pause on things like this and then in order to, we think things through a little bit? I just throw that out there, and I don't have any strong feelings about it, per se.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, just for everyone's knowledge, I did reach out to the Maryland Department of Ag and invited them to the work session today. There was a conflict. Um, the gentleman I spoke to did email us a fact sheet, which I will send to council members later. He just emailed it this morning, um, but we are talking about a future work session with them.
Great, thank you, Ms. Hurley. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I think the only two, two primary things here, uh, which we could take away from it, is that the public, I think, really wants to know where we are on a regular basis. Again, we know that it's, uh, you know, in reconciliation right now, but somehow or other, some avenue where we can update the public on a regular basis. I know we're trying to do that, and it's early as sending, you know, you know, information that we get as we get it to the community members. It'd be nice to do that as a county, uh, countywide, and, um, not only that, but maybe what recommendations there might be for some future guarantees, um, to see how we can tighten down on this. I, I don't know if we have the, um, if it's our, I don't know, if it's our responsibility to simply eliminate something because, you know, maybe we have, we have concerns about it, if there are ways to sort of, uh, see how we can work with it. I, I, and I don't know.
I think we'll, we'll be sensitive because I, I don't want to say, but, well, I'll go ahead and put out there, I want to be certain that we understand the charge as staff as being, um, coming from the council. Are, are we looking for regulations that are going to be more restrictive to farming?
Yeah, I know, I know.
That, see, I, I mean, that's the crux of where we're at, and that's why I said a high degree of sensitivity and reasonableness of looking at it comprehensively, but ultimately understanding when we're talking about regulating it, that is the perception that it would be more restrictive.
No, I do what I, Keith, I totally disagree with you there.
Help me understand that.
Yeah, the.
Are we going to make it more?
We're not looking to regulate any way farming.
Okay.
We're looking for just common sense, you know, we have people parading up to this podium every meeting we have, obviously, we got an issue.
Right.
Let's address that issue. It's not about, quote, regulating farming, you know, we got a certain use here, it's something that's not, you know, it's not specifically classified in our zoning code. Okay.
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out.
Things like, things like that we need to address. You know, going, you know, that's, you know, negativity associated, we're not trying to regulate farming, uh, you know, th- these are ag districts, you know, this is about promoting farming. It's, this is about promoting good land use, so, yeah, it's not about, yeah, so anyhow, you know, I just want to say that, you know.
Yeah, I, it's just, it's a little bit challenging.
Not the regulation, not the regulation, but the placement.
The placement.
The proper placement.
Okay.
Right?
More, more citing.
Right, right, right. I mean, there, there, we have no parameters around, you know, this is a use.
Well, that's, yeah, that, that helps us understand.
There's common sense parameters, uh, you know, so.
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, I think we beat it to death pretty good.
Okay, it's a good start.
No, it's a good start. I mean, that's why we wanted to, I mean, and I, I, I think when I began, I said I wanted to hear from you guys, because, yes, we have been talking about this for some time. It's been out, and so we wanted to get to the crux of it in regards to what was on the council's mind.
Sure, understood.
We appreciate, we appreciate you all being with us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to do the amendment to the capital improvement plan.
Where is she?
She's here.
She's there, sorry. She's calling. Who's invited her to lunch?
I'd like to, I'd like to do that. Hopefully, I don't think it's going to take too long. Um, the water and sewer plan amendment for Delmar, I think we can do that after lunch, and the letter of support we can do after lunch.
Sure.
If you don't mind. Don?
Hi, how are you all?
Fine, thank you. I'll let you lead out if you'd like. You're requesting that we, there were, Weston?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start off. Um, yeah, Don Veach, Airport Manager here. We have been offered a grant, uh, from the Secretary of Commerce, ultimately coming from the Department of Commerce, um, in the amount of $100,000 from their Economic Development Assistant Fund. And the purpose of that money is to be used for equipment and furnishings of the drone hangar, uh, and it can also be used towards construction, so if we have any change orders or, or any things that pop up that could, uh, increase the cost, we can, we can utilize this money as well. So, um, again, Don's here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? And we do have to amend the 1923 capital improvement plan for this? We know how I feel about that?
I have emailed Weston and Mr. Wilbur on that question.
Given, given this could be potentially used for the construction of the facility, we thought it, um, wise to edit the CIP, uh, because we would have to do it at that point. Um, the, the intention is to use this to furnish, uh, parts of the building and, and get equipment, um, so that may or may not hit CIP levels, so to be safe, we, we put, um, editing the CIP for this.
I always thought that when you, when you voted on and approved the new CIP, that superseded the prior CIP, and I, I would think that we would just amend the current CIP to add this.
We could, it's just not mentioned in the FY20 to 24 CIP because it was a 19.
Right, that's why we would amend it to add it.
Yeah, we, uh, which we can. Yeah, we can.
Because to me, now.
That was the question, do we retroactively go back and amend the fiscal year 19, or can we add it to the fiscal year 20?
I think we put fiscal year 20, we, we add a new sheet, um, showing this project.
Because if not, you're going to have to amend both of them.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So, you got to amend 20.
Yeah, so I think, I think amending the current FY20 to 24 CIP is the way to go there.
Okay.
But, um, we're, we're, uh, grateful that the state has, uh.
Yes.
Looked upon this project positively from an economic development standpoint.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
All right, any other questions?
So moved.
All right.
All right.
Can I just say?
Thank you all.
It does require a public hearing.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Yeah, right, that's not, yeah, they need a break and.
All right, we're going to go to water and sewer plan amendment. Mr. Baker?
Sure.
Thank you very much. And Joan, you're last.
I just want to let everyone know, it does require a public hearing.
Okay.
August the 6th.
Okay.
Hello again.
Sir.
So, this is a, uh, a water and sewer plan amendment for the Delmar assisted living facility. Their subject tanks failed, and they are hooking up to the town of Delmar Sewer, um, and they have to, in order to do that, they also have to revise the water and sewer plan to, to reflect that change. And Josh Taylor with Davis, Bone and Fidel, the town engineers here, if you have any specific questions about the, the flow or anything like that, but, um, this amendment has been to MDE in draft form. They've looked it over, commented, all those comments have been addressed, so the process will be coming here for the work session and then being resubmitted to council under legislative session for formal approval before we submit it to MDE and MDP for their formal approval.
Okay, Josh, is it Josh?
Yes.
Did you have any, would you like to make a couple of comments, um?
Well, no, just, uh, I can say I.
You can grab him, wait.
Sure.
He took the time to be here, so.
You're allowed to talk.
My name's Josh Taylor, I'm with Davis, Bone and Fidel. We represent the town of Delmar. Uh, we appreciate all the assistance the Department Works Department, the county has offered, uh, working with us, Keith, uh, and you guys for considering this. Uh, we've got a, a good business here in Delmar, we want to keep them here. Unfortunately, when their subject failed, that's when they wanted to expand. Um, the solution was pretty straightforward and easy, and, uh, appreciate you guys working with us to help make this happen.
Okay, um, any questions from anybody? Nope.
In my age, we need all the assisted living places we can get.
And it's a, it's a high quality facility.
Needs, needs to be done.
I'm assuming this will come back to us, Mrs. Hurley?
Um, yes, this also requires a public hearing.
Thank you, okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is a letter of support for House Bill 19 to remove single-family dwellings from, uh, the mandated requirements for automatic sprinkler systems. I think everyone here has had the opportunity to see the letter. We've been involved in this debate for a few years now. Um, is the council okay with, uh, putting out a letter of support?
So moved.
Yes. Yes, yes, we're good?
Should be a choice.
Josh?
Yeah, it's fine. Do we, I don't know if we had any info from the local firefighters or any there. I haven't seen any latest of their opinions, I don't even know what the breakdown there, I know.
Should be a choice.
You all right, Ernie? Okay, all right, um, so be it. We'll get that out, uh, this afternoon, I'm assuming. Great, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Before, actually, before we adjourn, because I think it is something that needs to be addressed at the council level. You know, we had the issue with, you know, we, we ended up with a tie with trying to appoint our replacement, but, and I know, you know, John, you made a statement, you know, it goes back to the Republican Central Committee, but also I'd asked Ms. Hurley what the process is, and, you know, she said the charter actually doesn't address that, so the charter doesn't say it goes back to the.
Central Committee.
Central Committee. So, you, you know, I, I just, I don't think we should leave here today with, you know, in all due respect, I mean, the council president doesn't have that authority to say, well, here's what we do.
Right.
You know, so I think, you know.
What do we do?
What do we do, right, exactly, right.
I would say we go back to the central.
That's kind of the question.
And that means going back to the central committee, I would say.
And if that happens, but the thing is, they're not going to, they can't, there's no way they can fairly do that between now and the end of the 45 days. That's what, we, we've got, what, 12 days or something?
Well, they have a list.
They got to advertise.
They have a list of 25 people.
They've already vetted.
Well, no, if it goes back.
They interviewed.
No, no, out of fairness, if it goes back, it starts, and like you said, John, you start the process. No, they should then send out, they need, they should advertise that they're taking applications.
They've already got a list.
Yeah. Well, see, then that's not fair to the people then that were on the list.
Well, that's what I said before. We, today, we threw the baby out with the bathwater. They're going to have to come to us with five, six.
No, no, there was ways, no, that's.
They'll have to come to us with five, six, seven, eight. They'll have to come to us with five, six, seven, and eight.
Why?
Because those are the people that apply and put their name forward.
Why should any of us support five, six, seven, and eight?
Because those are the people that.
Why should any of us support not the, not the four qualified candidates, but the, the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, that they, that they determined not to be qualified?
They didn't say they weren't qualified.
Well, they didn't give them to us.
I think we should get a legal opinion on this.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, there's work that has to be done, that's the thing. It's not something that we can just.
I think we should have a special election, let the voters decide.
You could clear it up right now.
Well, I'm, I'm still, I still think, you know, it's our responsibility to go back to the Central Committee, ask them to put it forward. It's going to be their decision to tell us that they cannot follow through with what the.
I think Ms. Hurley has the right comment, we need to get a legal decision on this,